I call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct roll call to ascertain quorum?
Councilmember Crosley.
Here.
Councilmember Buckingham.
Here.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Madam Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. We do not have any. Councilmembers that are not present, so I'll move on to item number five. Attorney Graves.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask that the minutes of this meeting reflect that pursuant to Section 610.015 of Missouri Sunshine Law, the city council members who are not physically present in the chamber may participate in this meeting and vote on the various matters to be considered remotely since urgency exists and we remain in the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number six, I am going to make a motion to amend the agenda, so I want to do that now. And then in our discussion, I will explain why. Mr. Reese, are you okay? You good?
I apologize.
That's okay. All right, so I move to amend council agenda to table item number 14. Item number 14 is the, excuse me, let me just leave it there.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no.
Motion.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes, so discussion, thank you Attorney Graves. So, item number 14 is the library project presentation by Ms. Frazier. Frazier has completed her project and the report. The report, if I recall, her telling me this was like 113 pages and we went over it this morning. We, as in Ms. Frazier, myself, and Director Bryant, we went over it and it, we took an hour and a half to go through the parts that I think you all will want to focus on, and I think those were like five pages. So, realizing that, I was like, you know what, I would like for council and the library board to have an opportunity to get the report, read over it, digest it, any questions that you have, you have time to get those questions, you know, written down, just so she's not presenting this to you and you're seeing it for the first time. So, that's why I would like for that item to be tabled to a later and then just put on another agenda in a future meeting, which could be like if we have one in August, the second one, if we do have one, it could be then or it could be the first meeting we have in September, so.
I think that we need to vote on that motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the discussion. I don't know if the library board has had a chance to see that document as well, but I think if it could be concurrently with us and them, I think that could be helpful.
That is gonna happen, yes. That's gonna happen. Once Ms. Frazier has completed some changes, she's going to send it to me and to Director Bryant, and then we are, Director Bryant and I are going to send it to our respective governing bodies. And then I'd also like for it to be, you know, a part of an attachment to the agenda of that meeting too, so our community can see it as well if they would like to, so, yeah, I just wanted to, I think we just needed more time after meeting today, I just didn't want to rush it, and I wanted you all to have the time that you need as well as the library board.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right then, so Councilmember Wood, I know that we need to vote on this, this is not a roll call, this is just a voice vote, correct?
Right.
All right, thank you so much, so all those in favor of amending the agenda to table item 14, please say, or just aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, any opposed? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so now let me ask.
We need to approve the.
Thank you, because that was my question, okay, so may I have a motion to approve the council agenda as amended?
Motion to approve council agenda as amended.
Second.
All those, excuse me, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number seven, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Carlos Largasabal, owner of Costa Bia Restaurant located at 2726 Sutton Boulevard for a full Sunday liquor license.
Mr. Reese, do you see anyone's hand raised for public comment?
Mayor Knapper, I do not.
Okay. I will move on to item eight, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing to receive input on how the city should allocate $64,000 in community development block grant funds, which will become available after January 1, 2022.
And if you'd like to speak at the public hearing, just use the raise your hand function on your Zoom client, and we will get you there.
Thank you, Councilmember Buckingham, appreciate you. You know what, forgive me. I'm going to ask the, I see the Maplewood Library is in attendance, and so I think that may be Director Bryant. I know this is out of the ordinary, because this is public comment, but I kind of want to, yay, okay. Would you please raise your hand and let council know some ideas that you had for the CDBG grant?
Okay, Maplewood Library, I think you're allowed to talk now.
Yep, hi. Um, can you hear me? I know that one time I had attempted to speak and it like my microphone didn't work, so, okay, good deal. Um, so, I had spoken a while ago about doing repairs to the building, not realizing that the grant was that far behind, so unfortunately, our building is in worse shape that it could not sustain in its current state for that long. So, I did send off some additional information, additional ideas that we had had, just talking to staff about what kind of projects we would really like to work on. And so, one thing that we've been really struggling with is hotspot and laptop allocation amongst staff. I am currently working on a grant to get more hotspots for patron use for borrowing, but a lot of the grants and that sort of thing, that sort of doesn't really allow for staff use, they must go for patron use. And we struggle with that whenever we do outreach and go to different programs. We don't have the ability to use those those hotspots, even if we could, even if they were allocated for certain staff use at certain times, they're always checked out. So, we don't, we don't have any. So, having things that we could do outreach events and have the ability to sign people up for library cards or to show them databases whenever we're away from the library would be, would be very helpful. And something else that we're really working on right now is digitizing our local history items. However, as they are, you know, firsthand documents, their original source documents, I do know that a lot of people like to come in and actually see them, kind of have access to them that way. And right now, they are unorganized in a closet on our lower level. And they're very difficult to get to, I do have staff working with a volunteer who is a, she's actually, during her day job, she works with archives, so she's been a tremendous help to us on getting, you know, telling us how to store these things and do that sort of protection of them and all that. But what we would like to do is, is make it to where the public can access them. So, with the inclusive bathroom that we did, where we now, instead of having two male, two female restrooms, we now have all the restrooms open to any person who identifies in any way. And with that, we actually have a restroom that I, I think was used like once in one week, and it just happens to butt up against that closet where we keep the local history items. And it's actually a very large restroom, it's really weird how big this restroom is. There's actually an extra closet down there that, that isn't even used. I think maybe it used to house things, but again, it's in a restroom, so it's just sitting there unused. So, staff had actually brought up the idea of knocking down that wall and extending that closet into the restroom area and allowing people to actually have the access to these items that we have, these photos and these, you know, albums and all these things that we have that are just locked away right now. My biggest focus and what I would like to see done are ADA upgrades. We have, you know, the stonework in front of the building is very, very difficult to navigate in a wheelchair or even a stroller, if somebody's bringing a stroller in. People that walk with canes or walkers, it's just very difficult on all of those things. And then you get to the doors and they're not accessible doors. And then if you have to go to the restroom, it's, it's a demeaning experience. You cannot open the restroom doors on your own if, if you're in a wheelchair. It's, it's very, I think, upsetting for people. So, just getting those ADA upgrades, those are just very, you know, basic things to make the experience of going to the library more inclusive and not demeaning to people. We had also talked about getting Paraquad to come out and do, do a site evaluation to, you know, maybe look at things that we didn't think of. You know, I, I'm not in a wheelchair, so there, there might be things that, that I haven't noticed or thought of. And then the other thing was a programming thing, we're hoping to work with artists, excuse me, artists first to host a a program called Opening Minds Through Art, and it is for people who are suffering through memory loss issues, dementia, Alzheimer's, that sort of thing. And it's an eight-week session, and the estimated cost is for materials and it's quite a bit more than what we would normally spend on a regular program. We typically keep programming costs to about 250 if we are, you know, hiring a performer or anything like that. And the estimated cost for this is 1,300 for one eight-week session. But of course, we'd like to do, you know, more than one week session, especially if it's popular. So, that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of, you know, programming and that sort of thing. So, that's what we came up with.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right, did anyone else want to provide any comment regarding the community development block grant funds and its allocation? Okay.
No more hands.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move to item nine. Public forum. At this time, if you would like to provide a comment to council, you are welcome to do so. As Councilmember Buckingham previously stated, just raise the little hand and then we'll know to call on you.
No hands.
Okay. Item number 10, announcements.
I do have a few. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Mid-County Concert Series resumes again in, for the month of August, August 25th, at Ryan Hummer Park from 6:00 to 8:00. And the elected officials will have a booth there. Now, I, as far as I know, and I did check today, it's still on, so if anything changes, just kind of be on the lookout for that. But right now, it's supposed to be scheduled. And also, many of the restaurants in town are holding Maplewood Restaurant Week, and that started the 9th and goes through the 15th. But to get a complete list of which restaurants and, that are participating and what they're offering, you can go to Maplewood City website. And they've got all the information about what they're offering, what the prices are and which restaurants. Also, during Restaurant Week, the, there's, this is a good opportunity to donate to the Maplewood Richmond Heights School Weekend on Wheels program. Donation cards are going to be at each of the participating restaurants. Of course, you can always reach out to the school district and do that too, but you can get your donation cards at these restaurants. And also, today is the 200th anniversary of Missouri statehood. And I've just been reading about that a little bit, so I just wanted to mention that, that this is our anniversary. So, some, some folks have been celebrating by having ice cream socials, but we missed the boat, we didn't have but, and that is all I have.
Any additional announcements? All right, moving on, item number 11, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the July 13, 2021 city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the July 13, 2021 city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number 12, Madam Clerk.
Yale Open Space Update.
Mayor Knapper, members of the council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the council, I wanted to put items 12 and 13 on the agenda to update the council on some things I've been working on. Mayor Knapper, I know I've spoke to you about the open space, which we have at 2270 Yale, which is just north of Manchester on the east side. And I've, I've looked at with my, with our new superintendent, Jason Watkins, and we're trying, we've come up with some ideas that we believe we're going to try to make that place more inviting to children in the area. For those that aren't aware, it's essentially an open field, and it basically allows the kids in the tween age, if they want to kick a soccer ball back and forth, throw a football, play baseball, gives them some space because of a lot of apartments in that area. So, a few things we're going to work on, we're going to create some signage to ID the site, add some fencing, the better to find the area. And we're going to do some, promote the area or the open space to the surrounding area specifically and let them know, hey, this is an open field, if you want to come play in it, you can, because when I was out looking at some excavations the other day, when you're looking at it, it doesn't, I think, a lot of people in the area, I don't know if we've done a good enough job promoting that you can go in there and that's open space for anyone to use. And I mentioned, we're going to do some additional promotions, we're going to have a Halloween movie night for children in the area, we're going to have a child scary, when I say child scary movie, some sort of Halloween themed movie for, for children in the area. We're still tossing around the ideas, but we're going to make it, try to make it an annual event, we're thinking possibly have some hot dogs out there, some safety packets and hand out some, some gifts for the kids, so that's all in an effort to essentially promote this space, try to let people know, hey, it's here, hey, it can and should be used. That's the Yale Open Space Update, the splash pad.
I'm sorry, Mr. Traxler, forgive me, I want to add some discussion to that and also want to give an opportunity to any council member that has questions about that, to ask questions, I'm not ready to move on to item number 13. So, that space, that open space, I understand, and I think the ideas that you just provided to us are great, but I also know that there are some community members in that area that would like to see more done, and so I am curious if, and I, have you or Ms. Hyde, you know, talked with the Parks, Park and Rec Board about that area and things to do in that area? What input have they had? Can you tell us about that?
They're doing an overall master plan, so they'll be looking at each and every park and figuring out what they want to do with it in the future.
Okay, and then do you know if that Park and Rec Board has had an opportunity to ever ask people that live in a particular area about the park that they frequent, has that, do you know anything about that? Like if that's been done?
If we're talking about the open space, the problem is nobody frequents it, it's not being utilized properly, which is why we're.
I'm not specifically talking about the open space, I'm talking in general.
Do we know if park board members have had a chance to ask the neighbors?
Yes.
I don't know if they've taken it at the time to go ahead and do so.
Okay.
Up to the individual park board members if they would like to do so.
Okay. In our last meeting, and Councilmember Crosley helped me, I want to say it was our last meeting, but I may have mistaken, but I know that we discussed a great deal about that space that is on Yale, like where the bus stop is, and some work being done there. What, I guess I'd like to know, like, because you are a representative of that ward, what, what are your thoughts about, you know, that area kind of possibly being reclaimed into a green space? So, there's just a larger space, and I'm talking about around the Yale area, not so much that open space.
Yeah, so I liked the ideas that Anthony just laid out, I thought that was like an innovative and flexible way to use that space, especially since I think we have to start from a place of like building that community expectation that they can use it, right? If I saw an empty lot, I wouldn't think I could just use it. I think before we talk about like expanding green space, I would want to know more specifically about like what are the needs of the people that actually live there? And I honestly haven't heard anything, so if you've got communications with constituents in Ward 2 talking about this, like I would love to be privy to those or included in those conversations, but I think something that we just have to be really realistic about in our conversations is how are we paying for this? And do we have the staff to maintain it? So, we talked a little bit too about just like the levels of maintenance at our parks, and if we can't afford to maintain all of our parks in the same condition, or we need to improve certain maintenance steps or maintenance actions at different parks, then I'm sort of hesitant to move into identifying additional green space, regardless of what sort of amenities are provided there, just because if we can't make, if we can't keep up the maintenance, we're doing ourselves a disservice by setting up, you know, community expectations that this is going to be functional for them. So, I like the idea of sort of trying to test a couple of different ideas of like how that green space can be used. When it comes to the, like the bus stop, like the number one thing for me is preserving access to that bus stop. And like that is a critical access point to public transportation. It is a critical frequented pantry from like what I can tell, and like preserving access to that in a way that is like comfortable and dignified for those people that need that space is like, I think, the original and the strongest use of that property. So, I think before we could say anything about like expanding or adding, I would want to know more about like what are, what is our ability to fund that sustainably?
I understand, I think I think that we are in agreement, I definitely would like to know what the neighbors would like to see in that area. And then I think what you just said, I think that would be like the next step is, you know, would we be able to sustain it? But I definitely would just like to make sure that we're getting our neighbors' input on these spaces.
And it sounds like you have gotten some, so do you have any like specific highlights of or like requests?
Yes, so there is a community member that manages a business on that east end of Manchester who has worked with one of our Maplewood police officers, and they were actually talking, it was their idea to kind of reclaim space at the Yale bus stop, and then really turn the, this lot that we're talking about into a parking lot, so relocating that parking lot at the Yale bus stop to this open space, and then making that area green space again. So, that came from them, but that's two people, and so that's why I was asking the questions of Mr. Traxler, like, okay, has, you know, does, does the park board have any experience, or have they done something in the past to talk with people that frequent the parks to see what they want? So, yeah.
The idea of open space is, is what that, again, regardless of where you have it, is it's really whether it's in one place or the other is, is kind of irrelevant, what is relevant is there's a lot of children in that area that live in apartments and they do not have access to any open space. Use the Sutton, Sutton Loop Bus, or pardon me, the Sutton Loop Park as an example. You all recall, we had, we had that park, you know, we had a lot of additional amenities planned for that park. And then whenever we, we left that green space, because it was planned in a series of phases, the residents in the area liked the idea of the open space, really, there is none in the Yale Loop area. If you're going to do open space and the idea behind it was for children in the area, it would probably make more sense to have it in the, in the lot I was speaking to just because of traffic concerns. But that's, that's what we could look at, that the park board could look at as part of their overall master plan process. We're just trying to get people in the area to use what's there now. If in the future, the park board, when they're going through this planning process, decides they would like to move it in one direction or another, and ultimately, we decide, we do the analysis, Councilmember Crosley said, that says it makes more sensible in one spot versus the other, we can absolutely do that at that time, but right now, I believe that process is going to take some time for them to go through and analyze all these parks. We have this amenity right now that's being underutilized, which is why we're going to be making some efforts in there, and I just wanted to update the council to be looking for those efforts, and hopefully, people in that community with some targeting promotion of that area will get use out of it, and maybe it'll also, once the park board does that analysis, help because they'll actually see what we have available right now as well. Again, I think it's just unwelcoming right now, and I don't think enough people know that if they want to go over there and play in that field, they can, and I think we're just trying to let people know, hey, this field is available for you to go play if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion for item number 12? Madam Clerk, item number 13.
Splash pad extended hours and Maplewood resident weekend at the pool update.
All right. The splash pad is obviously an inquiry of a lot of people anticipating that we open. We just got a major hurdle or approval um, from St. Louis County Department of Health. And, um, so within the next couple of weeks, it should be open. It, it was really unfortunate. We didn't have it open this season, but one thing that came out of it is it got me thinking. Could we possibly extend this since the season will be over and we really haven't had an opportunity to use it? And then it got me thinking further, why can't we have this open? Not necessarily year round, but many more months aside from just when the pool is there. And I know in the past, the park board had looked at possibly having a splash pad or water feature in other parks uh, to allow people that are not members of the, uh, pool to be able to utilize this. So I reached out to the St. Louis County Department of Health a while back and they've essentially told us, A, we do not need to staff this, which is good. It's essentially a passive park. And B, all we would need to do is simply fill out a use permit each year. So, starting this fall, when the pool, when the splash pad opens, I believe it'll open right before the pool closes. In fact, I think you'll get a few weeks out of it, but maybe a couple of weeks, but please don't hold me to that because it's still dependent on the county. We are looking at different types of fencing to put between the splash pad and the pool area. And we're going to, we will be installing that when the pool closes each year and we will have the splash pad open. Uh, basically from when the pool closes, probably through October first, just because of the weather. And that will be available to anyone. It'll be basically an open park like all of our other parks are. And we will probably open that splash pad, um, probably around April first again for anyone to use until the pool opens. And then we would basically remove and install that fencing as we need it. So instead of getting three months out of that splash pad, we'll probably get more like six months out of it. And about half the time it will be for members and the other half it will be for anybody that wants to use it. So I think we'll get a lot better bang for our buck. So that was something that I think is actually going to be something good that came out of this delay. And while we were talking about the, um, the splash pad and encouraging, or allowing other people to utilize it as opposed to just members of people that buy membership of the pool. Um, I bounced the idea off of, um, Molly, who's the, um, Parks Director at Richmond Heights, if she had concerns if we kept the pool open later in the year. And essentially had a, uh, City of Maplewood resident weekend. And it could basically mean anyone can use the pool, whether you're a member or not a member. And right now, um, we're looking at, we're having discussions with our pool, uh, lifeguarding service Midwest Pool. We believe that's going to be the weekend of September 11th, where any Maplewood resident can do that. I'm quite certain it's going to be this fall. If it's not, we will start doing this every year, which will again allow everyone to be able to use a pool. Um, and, uh, starting next year, we're going to have our own lifeguard service. We're going to be doing it in-house again after many years. So I know for a fact in 2022 it will work, but I'm anticipating September 11th or 12th. And Michael can keep you updated on it, but be looking for that. And that's an idea that I think we're going to carry out throughout the year. And then, uh, after I talked to Molly about that, she brought up some additional ideas we're going to have. We're going to try to work with the school district a little bit more for some special uh, back to school weekends at the pool and have some additional events on that as well. So look for those changes either late this summer or for sure next year. Does anyone have any questions on those items? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traxler. Item number fifteen, Madam Clerk.
Uh, COVID nineteen.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to talk with you all about a call that the president made to localities about COVID nineteen. Um, and specifically he asked localities to look to see what remaining COVID, or excuse me, CARES Act funding they had or ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, um, that could be used as incentives, hundred dollar cash incentives for people to get the COVID nineteen vaccine. Excuse me. So this was, the president made this call to localities, probably like a, a day or two after. Um, I watched the county council meeting in which they, majority of those members, five to two voted to, in the emergency mask mandate. And so of course I was just highly concerned. Um, I am not aware of the data as far as like vaccination rates for our area. Um, I have reached out to Councilmember Clancy for that information and she says she's going to look into it and see if she can get that for us, um, because I'd like to know. But going back to President Biden and, and his request, I wanted to talk with you all about an incentive program. Um, and doing more research, uh, I learned from council member, County Councilmember Clancy that there's already an established incentive program that the county has created. Uh, and they did that maybe last month. Um, so it's supposed to be ran by the Department of Public Health. Um, I'm sure you all know the Department of Public Health is overwhelmed with a lot of things. And so, um, Councilmember Clancy told me that, you know, we had this, this program exists for incentives and, um, there's no reason why someone from Maplewood, um, or Richmond Heights, I want to also include them because I'm thinking about our school district. So there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to get funds from this incentive program. The problem is it hasn't started yet. And so just wanted to talk with you all about that, the incentive program. And then, um, also talk with you all, like, would you have any interest in doing a program like that? Um, there are other mayors across the country that have these incentive programs, but they are not managing those programs. They are, what they're doing is they will reach out to a nonprofit organization that specializes in distributing grant funds. And that nonprofit organization, um, will manage the incentive program on their behalf. Um, the reason why I'm asking what your thoughts are on this is because if county, if the county is not able to get this program up and running, um, soon, and we see that we are in dire straits and we want to incentivize folks in getting the vaccine. Wh- what are your thoughts on having something in the future, um, if, if county can't manage to get this program off the ground?
So Department of Public Health is already rolling out incentives. The gift cards are complex for a number of reasons related to just ARPA compliance expectations in county procurement rules, um, which I'm like heavily professionally involved in. Uh, Maplewood, the zip code breakdown of vaccination data was released end of last week. It's on STLcorona.com in the search brief. Maplewood is at a sixty percent rate. And, um, north of us, the direct zip code north of us is at sixty-six. And to the west of us is sixty-seven and to the south of us is sixty-six. Um, there are additional other gift cards, or not gift cards, excuse me, other vaccine incentives that the county is rolling out, whether we receive them, um, receive them from, uh, donations or, um, purchasing them in addition to the gift cards. But we are focusing largely on zip codes that are in the, uh, low to mid similarities. Um, the zip code breakdown, just like of kind of a caveat is that, um, it, it is important for us to see where, you know, vaccine uptake is happening, but it doesn't mean that because I'm in a certain zip code with a high enough vaccine percentage that I'm safered. And I should change my behavior, right? It's still safe. It's like, it's still not safe to be indoors without a mask, that sort of thing. Um, and sorry, I don't want anyone to hear, oh, Maplewood's got a good vaccine rate, so we're good. That's not a, a wise way to direct your behavior. Um, I read the article you sent, Mayor. It was specific to states and I think that's been kind of an issue as well for the county is that most vaccine incentives are largely run by state organizations. Um, there are some exceptions with private companies facilitating this as well. Um, so I have a lot of questions about how we would do compliance, what staff would be dedicated to doing this because it is a massive undertaking regardless of the amount. Just due to the fact that this type of program will be heavily audited by the federal government in the next few years. Um, so I think, yeah, go ahead.
What article? I recall sending.
Link you sent?
I, I recall sending two videos, but I don't recall sending an article.
It might've been like the text embedded with the video that you sent, but there was like, I thought it was like an NBC link or something. I can dig through my emails.
No, no, you don't. My focus, um, when I sent that to Mr. Traxler and Mr. Reese, um, and Attorney Graves was just to give like the, uh, the reason why I was asking for that to be included on the agenda. And the focus was really the video, um, which was the president making that call. Um, so that's why I was, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't send anything that I didn't need to. But.
Can I ask a statistical question about that data, Councilmember Crosley? When the percentages are given, is that, um, the percentage of people eligible for the vaccine or a percentage of total population?
Um, let me triple check the graph, but it should be, um, percent eligible. So it's not taking into fact the fact that it's like children under twelve. Um, yeah.
I mean, I guess I would, I hate, I hate to duplicate efforts if it's extremely complicated and time consuming for our staff who is very limited. Um, I guess I'd like to understand sort of like what the game plan is, like if you were to do this, like how would you target those people to make sure that we're really? Like if we're gonna take something, undertake something this massive, like making sure that it would actually be worth that, you know, if we could do it. So I guess I, I'd like to know more about sort of how, how we would get to those people.
Okay. And just to, just to repeat, I'm only focused on MRH. Um, so I'm not looking at other areas. And then also this, this would be just a backup plan, um, for us to consider and possibly do. So, so a lot of time would pass before I would come back to you all and say, okay, you know, could we, could we consider this? Um, I'm really just trying to see what your interest is, your interest is in it and, and doing it possibly, because I already know that the county, um, has this program. And Councilmember Crosley, I just got different information from, um, uh, Councilmember Clancy on county council. So, you know, from, from what she understands, you all haven't been able to get it started yet. So maybe there's just, you know, information that's just being crossed. Um, but if, if that program has started, is it possible for us to get that information?
So the vaccine incentive, we're broadly providing vaccine incentives and are in progress with different pieces of it. The, the gift card piece, we have not purchased gift cards yet. So for example, we announced like Cardinals tickets at some of our clinics that started today. Um, we're working on some different agreements that are in process right now. So I can't provide much more detail because they're in like legal operations right now. But we have like a whole team of fiscal, community engagement, like outreach staff who are working on this. Um, so like it's, it's coming. Um, it's just complex. And like obviously the Department of Public Health understands the urgency of this, um, since we're dealing with, you know, COVID patients every day.
Okay. So I think we were talking about two separate things then. I was talking about the bill that, you know, Councilmember Shalonda Webb set up, was passed, and that was the grocery gift cards. So I understand now that you all are working on that and that hasn't been launched yet, right? Okay. All right. So since you're telling us that that's coming, then I will gather the information, um, Councilmember Schmidt, that you said you'd be interested in seeing. And then we can just see, you know, how the rollout goes and it may not need, we may not need to even think about this because the county's already doing it. And then if, if we are, then I'll circle back with you all with more information and I'll make sure to talk with Jackie, or excuse me, Attorney Graves about all of that before I present to y'all. Okay. Any additional questions or discussions? Or discussion, excuse me, on this item? All right. Item number sixteen, Madam Clerk.
Depression of twenty twenty-two Community Development Lot Grant Fund.
All right. Did, did anyone else, you know, hear from any neighbors, uh, about what they would like to see in the use of these, this grant fund? Okay. Um, I will tell you that I, uh, heard from a representative from the Sustainability Commission. Um, two ideas, one was, uh, pay for waste recycling or waste cleanup done by a third party. And then the second was electronics recycling or electronic disposal. And that was from, um, Ms. Megan Homa and she's a member of the Sustainability Commission.
So I've previously received a question about the electronics recycling, um, piece. Um, some of our neighbors offer it. So I think like Brentwood does one, Richmond Heights does one. Um, so I like it because I think like the convenience of it could be nice. I just don't know how much a program like that would cost to operate. So it's kind of hard to.
We've all, we have.
Yeah, let's go with that.
Those in the past.
Yeah, okay.
We've had them in the past with the pool. We've had them, we had them for three years straight. So, um, we have a company we work out with if, and we will, um, we can, we can have another one honestly at any time. It's really not, not too expensive. It's, uh, we take it out of our trash fees. If we need to do another one, we can absolutely do it. We've had them at the pool in the past, uh, the pool parking lot. I know we've had at least three. We can do another one.
Can I ask just like a couple of like sort of questions to help establish like what this discussion, like where it goes? Because we, do we, do we have to make this decision tonight or just edit by our next meeting?
You have to make the decision tonight or, uh, hopefully tonight. So we'll, we'll know, but the, the very last we have to turn it in is on the thirtieth. So the resolution, we can make it more generic if we need to. We can do it at the next meeting if need be, but.
And then.
We're running out of time.
And then the second question is, is that we can only, uh, divide it into two pots, right? Like we can only choose two things. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And I mean, for me personally, I really like the subsistence payments. I think that program is very helpful. That's ten thousand and that's the most we can put in it, right?
Correct.
So we have a like fifth, what I'm hearing is we have a fifty-four thousand dollar pot that we have to decide what to do with for like one act, one program?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in terms of the, the how, the homeowner's assistance program, Mr. Traxler, do you know sort of about on average, uh, what a homeowner gets for that? And then what are typical types of things they use it for? on average, uh, what a homeowner gets for that? And then what are typical types of things they use it for?
Yes, typically, typically it's right around five thousand dollars. Usually it's for the max because five thousand, when you're looking at home improvements, honestly, don't go too far. It could be, i- it's, it is all over the board. Honestly, Councilmember Schmidt, there's no typical answer. It could be fixing a front porch, uh, it could be new siding, um, it could go towards a roof. Uh, it could go towards other internal improvements. Basically, if you have home repairs you need to make within your home and you fall below the income levels or the threshold, you can apply for this.
Do you know what those income thresholds are off the top of your head?
I don't, but I could, I could easily find out and follow up. Um, I, I, it's, it's, I don't know the actual, what the dollar figure is today, but I could definitely find out.
Okay, thank you. I mean, so I guess the question is for us is, you know, do we continue to use it for that program, which I don't think we have, you know, we can't use any other funds we have for that type of program is my understanding. Or does someone have an idea for the whole fifty-four thousand, um, that I would also want it to be something that we don't have another pot of funds for, I guess, would make sense to me. Um, I don't have anything. I don't know if anyone else does.
For the, um, there were two items that Director Bryant mentioned and it seemed like one was about like ADA accessibility to bathrooms. And then the other, I can't remember what the other one was, but it was about the building. And it seems like, um, to what you just said, Councilmember Schmidt, the capital improvement fund pot could go to that. So then the other programs, um, one was laptops for employees. And then I think the other one was the, um, artist, the program with the artist first. Would we be able to put some money towards either of those? And Mr. Traxler, you know that grant, you know, very well. Do you, do you know if those programs would qualify for that?
I believe all would except for the laptops for the employees. I think if it was laptops for the public, it would qualify. And I, I would have to go through and verify with our coordinator. I think Councilmember Schmidt nailed it with the fact that we're limited with two selections. So everything is valid that we're talking about. The problem is you'd have to find out how to spend fifty-four thousand dollars on what either one of those particular items. And I don't, now the ADA improvements, you could absolutely get there. You know, depending on how much we're talking about. It's very pop, but you know, for the other library programs and library computers, I don't see that. We were looking at some infrastructure improvements to the library. I know we're, um, I'm gonna have a drone fly over, I think, uh, this Friday to look at the roof and we've got our roofing contractor looking at that. I've met with Ms. Bryant, I believe it was last week. There are still obviously waterproofing issues. You can eat up fifty-four thousand dollars easily with that. But remember, we talked a while back about, we believe the need is more immediate for that. We would not see this money for at least eighteen months and or longer based on the history, so. I mean, it's, it's up to the council, but you're gonna have to find a way basically to spend fifty-four thousand with one additional item if we keep the care assistance. It's a shame they, they cap it at ten thousand to be honest.
I guess my thought is too, you know, I think this council is committed to helping the library pay for those repairs, which I think should free up to, I mean, to me, it seems like it would free up some of their reserve that perhaps they were gonna use for that to be able to establish some of those programs, use them towards, you know, that, to me, that's part of the goal is like helping lift that, the burden of the, the physical problems so that they can use their money for what they should be using for, which is programming. So I guess, I guess for me, I'm looking for maybe something, someone different to use that money for. But again, it's, it's hard. I mean, I like programs that are more open than just to homeowners, but I feel like we're sort of in a spot where we don't have a lot of time to figure it out. And maybe it's that we are more proactive next year and soliciting input from various boards and commissions to come up with creative ideas, um, and, and stick with the rehabe- rehabilitation program. But again, um, I, I mean, only two of us have spoken. So other people, please share your thoughts on that.
I mean, I'm always gonna pitch for sidewalk improvements. Um, I think there's some very necessary ones that need to be made. Um, I think, just like a quick note on process, I like all the ideas that have been, um, tossed out, but it's hard to make a determination when there's no sort of like cost analysis with that. And I don't wanna send folks down a rabbit hole of gathering that information, right? I think it's one thing for an estimate on, you know, increasing a program, um, by X percentage versus having to get quotes, but, um, I'd like to advocate for sidewalks, um, if anyone's meaningful to that.
I will say that I have had complaints about sidewalks and that's been an ongoing thing. So I know I have advocated for that in the past and, um, I'm kind of an advocate for that too. Although I do, um, like the homeowner one too, because you can't get that money anywhere else. So either one of those, um, I'm fine with.
Do we have, I, I know, um, as someone who actively, um, uses the sidewalks, especially in my ward, do we have fifty-four thousand dollars worth of sidewalk repairs that we need, um, that we need money for? Or is there still money in the, um, in our streets budget to accomplish um, more, uh, continued improvements to sidewalks?
We could, within those income eligible areas, I'm convinced we could find fifty-four thousand dollars within those income eligible areas worth of sidewalk repairs, especially when you start getting into installation of ADA curb ramps on, uh, at intersections. We have a lot there, but a lot of them don't meet the requirement. So some of, even though you, you think you have one that is there and it's, it's okay, it still doesn't meet requirements. So Councilmembers, I believe we could easily find fifty-four thousand dollars in infrastructure improvements. Um, when Ms. Bryant earlier mentioned something about the ADA accessibility of the library, I just, it made me think, uh, we're gonna be doing within the next probably six to nine months, we're gonna start, I'm gonna start the groundwork on a citywide ADA accessibility study where we're gonna look at sidewalks, uh, throughout town. We're also gonna look at all of our own buildings, which would include the library. So if in the future, if you, because we would need some estimates before we could submit the application, possibly for next year's block grant, I could have, uh, some good estimates available for what it would cost to make some of these library improvements, which would be nice, but not necessarily immediately needed like the, um, the waterproofing issues. Uh, that's just food, food for thought. If you guys like that idea and don't go with it, I can get some estimates for the library. So next year, when we're filling out this block grant application, we'll have some hard numbers to look at and find out what specifically needs to be done and or could be done.
Yeah, I do like the ADA for the library because, um, it, especially she pointed out the entrance to the library. Well, if you go to replacing that, I would think that would be pretty costly, but a really good point because, yeah, you know, if you're walking, that's one thing. But if you're in a wheelchair, that would be a little bit hard and then getting in the front door. So I would be interested in doing that at some point for sure.
I also wanna do that for City Hall too, because if you come in the rear entrance of City Hall, um, right now, if you're in a wheelchair to be able to open that door and make your way through, there is a problem. We need one of those arms that kind of sticks away from the door where you could have a manually, oh, uh, manually opening door there. Then you could get to the elevator and then access City Hall, because City Hall is, has the same problem right now. And that's another thing we're looking at when we do part of this study.
And to me, those are things that are more immediate than when this money would come in anyway, that I would rather like fund those sooner with other funds we may have than wait two to three years for these, I guess. Like I, like here, I think it's, I agree, like it, you know, if, if, if our residents or visitors to the library who are in a wheelchair cannot utilize the bathroom by themselves, like that is a problem. To me, that's an immediate problem that we should perhaps be helping find ways to fund, um, but these funds, right, like they won't be avail- So whatever we're picking this for now, it will be two to three years from now that we will be utilizing them, right?
Yeah, it used to be about eighteen months and it's, Councilmember Schmidt seems to be going back further and further. If you recall, even as recently as a few years ago, we used to be doing this process in early June and it's already been pushed back to the end of August.
So I feel like we always, I mean, I, I'm fine with the idea of sidewalks, especially if we're focusing on trying to make them m- more accessible. Um, I mean, that, that would be fine with me too. Um, Trevor, I'm, I'm with Councilmember Wood. I'd be, I'd be fine with either program.
Yeah, I, I like the, personally, I like the sidewalk one. We have such a walkable community. I hate um, seeing sidewalks in disarray. And, you know, I, I can manage them fine, but you know, there, we have several residents that can't. Uh, I've seen them in the street. You know, getting by some places, so. You know, and I think especially if we're eighteen months out, um, I'm sure we'll have a decent idea. You know, what kind of ADA improvements we can make to those sidewalks, um, Anthony, when, when you're done with your thing. Uh, and I certainly think the next, uh, um, time this is up that, uh, it would make sense or, or to help out the library with their, with their ADA requirements, whatever they need. We'll probably do that as part of, as I said, part of an overall city. And then what we'll do is they'll probably list, I'm assuming as part of this study, based on what I've seen from other cities, they'll list the most pertinent items first. And so we could use block grants in the future, most likely for maybe some of the middle tier items where we would have a little bit of time to get to. But I anticipate we use some capital funds for the immediate concerns. Um, I think really what they wanna do is just see that you actually have a plan, have identified problems and have a plan for future, future improvements. I could even, I'm meeting with Ms. Bryant probably in another week and a half or two weeks to follow up on some other things from a prior meeting. I could take a look at that bathroom and see if there's anything we can do immediately. It sounds like maybe the physical constraints means it's something much bigger, but I can see if there's something maybe immediately that we could do to make it a little more accessible. Obviously, without seeing, I can't make promises, but we can sure attempt to try to make it better at least until something more permanent is done.
If we're all, um, it sounds like we're all somewhat in favor of sidewalks for this round. Um, I just wanna point out that, um, I, I am reading Angie Schmidt's new book right now, Right Away. And it talks about pedestrians, um, and how much, uh, how much greater the, uh, poor communities and people of color are more impacted by, um, pedestrian deaths in the United States. And so it is, you know, it definitely, improving our sidewalks is gonna help our most vulnerable citizens, whether they are homeowners or renters or, um, the unhoused. So, um, so if that, you know, helps us to make a decision, I think it is, you know, the uh, walkability of our community impacts everyone, not just, um, not just homeowners. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Phillips. Uh, yeah, I'm sold. I was sold on sidewalks before, but appreciate that extra. I do. Alright. So I, I think, like you said, Councilmember Phillips, uh, we, we have an agreement, right? Like on sidewalks, um, subsistence payments. Was there something else? I just wanna make sure. Was it just those two or was there a third? No? Okay. Okay. Um, are we good? Cause I know we're not kind of voting on this. We're just agreeing to it and then, um, Mr. Reese is gonna move forward with it. Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I think that, I think that.
Okay.
No, I was just saying, correct me, um, Mr. Traxler, I think you just needed to know from us and then you guys will prepare the resolution for the next meeting. Is that accurate? That lists those two things?
That's accurate.
Alright, alright.
Alright. Thank you.
We typically put it in the memo, just so everyone's aware. Keep the resolution a little generic, which gives you some flexibility. But we turn the memo as well as a resolution in the minutes all into the block grant as part of our application as well as sign-in sheets, which we also created from the, uh, from the public form.
Alright. Item number seventeen, Madam Clerk.
Motion to approve a full and Sunday liquor license for Carlos Arbatzabal, owner of Costa Maya Restaurant located at twenty-seven, twenty-six Sutton Boulevard.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number eighteen, Madam Clerk.
Bill sixty-one, sixty-seven, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood, and Richmond Heights to provide a shared fire training officer.
This is going to, that was the first reading. Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just gonna ask a question. Um, there is already a fire, fire training officer that, is that correct? That's already doing that.
That's correct. This has been in place, um, with Clayton and Brentwood since two thousand sixteen. Essentially, all we're doing is, is bringing Richmond Heights into this training program as well.
Okay, my question is, um, who is that person and which fire department are they from? Because I really didn't know.
He, he, it's the, it's the initial, it was the training officer for the city of Clayton for many years. He's a battalion chief. And all we did is essentially allow him to also, we would, we basically trained together, trained jointly, and then we pay a portion of his salary. So by bringing Richmond Heights in, it'll actually, um, the more people we bring in, the better, because it, it, it reduces our overall share. His office is out of Clayton. I believe Mr. Reese just ran into him, uh, on Monday. He was over at, uh, the firehouse, um, training our officers. You'll see him over there quite often, usually when they're out and about.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, second reading.
Bill sixty-one, sixty-seven, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood, and Richmond Heights to provide a shared fire training officer.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The third and final reading will take place at the next City Council meeting. Item number nineteen, Madam Clerk. Counsel, any old business you'd like to discuss? Alright, hearing none. Item number twenty, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Communication.
Any communication?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask the question, um, and figure out about agenda setting. Because I had asked for a couple of items to be on the work session agenda like three or four weeks ago. And, um, I had indicated in that if we didn't get to them, that would be okay, you know, to move them to a next meeting. Um, but I received a message late Friday, um, from Mr. Traxler informing me that Mayor Knapper, you'd removed them from the agenda. And so I guess, um, because we, you know, there was a lot on there. because we, you know, there was a lot on there, some things were added after I had sent in my suggestions. I guess maybe they were, you know, more timely. I guess I'd just like to understand going forward. I guess they would have appreciated the opportunity maybe to leave them on there in case we ended up having time and then and then if we needed to, you know, go through a process like tabling them or doing something like that, I guess. Or maybe having the opportunity to like know, you know, what was on our meeting agenda, then maybe I could have gone through the process to see two other council members along with myself to approve putting it on the agenda. So I guess you know, going forward, could we possibly allow that opportunity before we remove agenda items or, you know, just trying to kind of figure out how to do that going forward?
So this is like telephone. I talked to Mr. Traxler on maybe it was Thursday and of last week, and he told me that you had requested two additional items to be included on the work session. And then he also told me that if you you said if it was too much, then it was okay for them not to be included. And so because of that, I was like, okay, we have a lot on the work session. So she said it was okay not to be included, then please, you know, exclude those. And then I also asked him to remove the Human Services Commission from the work session too, because I was trying to make sure that we didn't have a lot of items on the agenda. So it wasn't just your items that I was like, okay, yeah, remove those. I removed one that I had asked to be on that agenda too. So it's not, it's not, it didn't happen, at least from my end, it didn't happen the way that you think it did. Because Mr. Traxler told me that you said if it was too much, you you were okay with it being put on another agenda in a future meeting. So that's why I was like, okay, let's do that.
Okay. And so I, and I know we've all had trouble with our email, but I did send the email to everybody and copied everyone and it, you know, it said, you know, if we run out of time. So I guess in the future, in going forward, if we could maybe like whosever it is, like have a conversation prior to doing that, I think that would be helpful because, you know, like we don't know, and maybe going forward too, this would be helpful if like, and we had asked about this a while back, but you know, the rest of councils sort of being more updated on sort of what is planned on meeting agendas, because we don't know until we get them. But I guess having some sort of heads up in planning so that we, you know, can maybe spread out some things where possible, I think would be really helpful going forward. I don't know, you know. I don't know. I just feel personally, I know we had talked about that last December, because we we didn't even know how the agenda was really set. So I guess that's just my ask is going forward if we could possibly have more discussion around that before removing them. So that was it.
Just so everyone's aware, there is a actual formal process. It's either the city manager, the mayor, or three council members can agree to get an item on the agenda. So for example, Councilmember Phillips had discussed the nine eleven ish issue, and there were at least three people that agreed and or at least replied back to the email to put it on there. Just so everyone's aware, there is a, there is a process.
Okay, so my items, we had talked about in a meeting and all approved. So I guess are you saying that that is not sufficient, then we have to then also send an email because one was at the last meeting? I asked to put it on. And so I guess going forward, would it be helpful then to then send a follow up email and ask? And you're saying that applies to work session or meeting, correct?
Yeah, I don't have, however, the council wants to to handle their agenda items is completely up completely up to the council. It's entirely their process.
Because it's not set forth in anything, is it? It's not in the charter. It's not in the ordinance.
I know, I know there's actually language written that says three members can put something on the agenda. I can look that up and and send that out tomorrow if the council would like.
So I've got the charter pulled up right now, and I think it's like the council can determine its own rules. And at one point, we had talked about doing that via resolution, because that's what the county council does. I've seen the three member rule for calling a special meeting. And so I think, like, this doesn't sound like necessarily an entirely process issue. This also sounds like a communication issue between like who's making what decisions and when and who's not being communicated with. But maybe that's something with like the help of Michael, we can kind of just set some like ground rules for putting things on the agenda, like, like asking for items on a work session or scheduling them or however we want to do that.
I think that's a great idea.
Councilmember Schmidt, did you send the email to my city email?
It was, I think it was before we started having all the problems. So my guess is you received it, but then it's been three weeks and now you don't have access, so you wouldn't be able to see it again.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I received it. Like, in in fairness to me, maybe I did, but like, I've been having issues, you know, longer than you all have. So I don't, I don't want you to think that I saw.
I noted that, like, that's what I said. I understand, like.
Let me finish, please. I I'm just telling you, like, I don't want you to think that I'm like purposefully ignoring your emails. Like, I really have had issues with my email access for a very long time at this point. So please don't think that. And then in regard to what you all discussed in December, you know, in fairness to me, I was not there in in December, you know, so I'm I'm with you all now. I do think that it's a very good idea for us to have rules. I was looking at the county council's rules today. It's actually four people can call a special meeting. I think we should do that. I think we should have like that conversation. I think we should go through that process. I also think that it's better for you all to be able to put something on the agenda than for you to have to get three folks to agree with you, three other council members to agree with you. You represent our community members. If you want to talk about something, then you shouldn't have to gather two other people to support that. I think you should have access to the agenda. That's what county council does. So I have no problem with that. I also think like when it happens like that. So for for example, like Councilmember Phillips gave me a FYI, and she was just like, you know, this is going to be on the agenda for the nine eleven discussion was going to be on the agenda, and she had the support of three council members. And I responded to her, telling her like, I would have supported that without you having to get other folks. And so the process that we have set up right now, for me, it's like when you feel like you have to talk to the mayor or you have to talk to Anthony and get, you know, two other people to support you. There's just, there's an opportunity there to have microaggressions built into it, and it's not necessary to me. So for me, I am totally fine with you all being able to put on the agenda what you want on the agenda. And that's it. So like, let's, let's talk about setting rules so we can do this, because like my good friend Jennifer Drake said, power extran- it expands, it does not restrict. So let's do this.
Yeah, and I I think that's what I think the council member process point, I think now is the opportunity that we have a new city manager. I mean, I think that's what we're asking to do is to clarify it. And I, I did want to just reiterate that I I did give you the grace and that I understood that perhaps you didn't have the email readily available. And so I wasn't, I just wanted to clarify, you know, and that's part of the problem with not having these processes is, is, you know, no one knows what's going on. And so I just was trying to make that point. And then second, as far as like what we determined December, you know, again, you know, I had sent you that detailed like notes I did from that, and I welcomed you to please add in your notes in like a different color, so we could see what your thoughts were about that. So that then we can all move forward together. I mean, I don't think it makes sense to reinvent the whole wheel. So if you would like to add your input into that and send it to everybody, and then we could kind of walk through it, I think that would be very helpful too, so that we do get your input in how you like to prefer to communicate some of those points. So and then we could just discuss it at a future meeting. I think that would be really helpful.
I I am not going to say anything more, because I don't want to, you know, stay on this, on this point. But I will say that I I'm going to definitely wait for Councilmember Eric Page to join us, so he can have a voice as well on this topic. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got another thing for council communications. We had talked about scoring the RFPs for the equity resolution at our next meeting. And so I wanted to remind everyone of that first and foremost. But secondly, ask if we need to push that back. Because it might be nice to have, to give Michael a chance to review and see if he can provide input if that's allowed. I don't know what our requirements are on, who can score our but also if our new council member is sworn in before our next meeting, his input might be like, we could better include that if he has more time. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to consider that, changing that, or if we wanted to keep that. Either way, I just wanted to remind everyone of it.
Any additional communication?
Well, I'd like for us to make a decision.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, the way that you ended it.
Was that deadline for our next council meeting? To score the RFPs? I apologize, I don't have my calendar in front of me right now.
That was what we said.
Yes, and that would be the twenty fourth.
And you're proposing extending it to the next one, at least, is that correct? Yeah.
I'm suggesting that we could if we want to. I'm not, that's not a hill I want to die on, but it was an idea that I had while I was sitting here.
Is our new council member going to be sworn in at the next meeting? Is that the tentative timeline, given the election result certification?
I think it depends on when the certification happens. That's usually the kind of flow, and I don't know.
Day now.
Usually, yes, but we have not received the certification. Once we receive the certification, we'll obviously put it on the agenda.
Yeah, so.
I can't think of the last time we've had a special election certification, Councilmember Phillips. I I would assume it'd be faster, but.
Yeah, there wasn't very much on it, so. I I would be in favor of of pushing the deadline, just in, you know, in the interest of of having our new council members sworn in potentially at our next meeting and then having that conversation, having, giving him a chance to to review the material as well.
That's fine with me.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. That was it.
Any additional communication? I actually no, I'll wait. All right. Hearing none, then item number twenty one. Mayor's report. I would like to let you all know that during my lunch hour today, I went over to Lyle Avenue, the twenty six hundred block of Lyle Avenue. And I spoke with some neighbors that are on that street. Excuse me, and as you all are aware, Lyle is in Ward Two, so Councilmember Crossley is aware that I went over there to address some issues that our neighbors are having with the building that is that is happening with the pizza and beer joint that's going on that end. And I just want to give you an overview of that conversation. First, a lot of the neighbors that live on that street are renters. I think I was told that there were like two, maybe two homeowners that are on that street that's like closest to where this business is going. Both of those homeowners are African American families, and both of those homeowners feel like they are being displaced by that business that's coming in. And so the concern that they all had was, one, they feel like because they are renters, their voice is not heard, that they are not invited to have a voice because they're renters and not homeowners. I had one neighbor tell me that he thought it was a part of, you know, our, our our bylaws and our charter that renters didn't have the the same standing to voice their concerns as a homeowner. So I told him that was incorrect. And that he is welcomed and all of the neighbors are welcome to reach out to their representatives in the ward as well as council. Excuse me. The other thing that the neighbors discussed with me was their concern about not getting information about the the zoning or the rezoning of that area. They said that they either got it after the fact, or some of them didn't get it at all. And I think they also attribute that to them being renters. And so I hope that we can work to ensure that we, when we're going through the process of, you know, planning zoning, reviewing information for something being, an area being rezoned, that they are insured that that our neighbors are getting the information about this, and it's not happening like after the fact, like they're getting the information from someone else, or they get a letter after the meeting is held, or they get a letter like a day before the a meeting is held to discuss zoning. We just do a better job with communicating with our neighbors, so they know what's going on in their area. And so, you know, people have a voice and they're not displaced. I will tell you just plainly, I'm very sad and a bit upset. No, not a bit. I am upset that we are losing two African American families in Maplewood. I think that we need for all of our families to stay here, especially families that are identified as a minority. So that it's it's disheartening. And then I will let Councilmember Crossley know and incoming Councilmember Page, because I believe he's on with us, that I've let them know you are their representatives to reach out with you, reach out to you rather, to, you know, talk with you about their concerns. So hopefully they'll be able to do that. And then finally, I'd like to make sure that we focus on ways to make equitable ways to make those residents and those neighbors whole. They're concerned about speeding on that street. They're concerned about parking. They're concerned about traffic. And they're, they're all valid concerns, because that street is narrow. And it is, it does need repair and sidewalks need repairs as well. So just wanted to share all of that with you. And that is a report from Ward Two. All right. Maplewood resident and executive director of the nonprofit Keep Pushing, Inc., Shayna Poole is having a back to school supply giveaway on August twenty first, and it starts at eleven eight AM. And if you'd like more information on that, you can go to keeppushinginc.org. I'd like to spotlight our wonderful US Representative Cory Bush for conducting the sit in in our nation's capital to get the extension of the eviction moratorium. She, she's bad, and I'm, and that's a good thing. So I'm so happy that she represents us and that she fights for all of us. As you all are, I'm sure aware, county council voted five to two to overturn the mask mandate. Our representative, Councilmember Lisa Clancy, voted in favor to uphold it, and I want to spotlight her and thank her for caring about the citizens of St. Louis County. The mid, mid county Chamber of Commerce is having its thirty fifth annual dinner on October eighth, if you all are interested. And going to that, I will be in attendance. And then the St. Louis County NAACP Freedom Fund Awards Dinner is held, will be held on October fourth. And I will be in attendance to that as well. And if anyone would like to join me, please let me know. I'd like for your company and to show up for the St. Louis County NAACP. And then finally, I am going to sign up for a challenge called Move With The Mayor. And this is a And this is a national initiative that asks mayors to get out and do a physical activity and challenge their community to do it with them, so we can reduce heart disease and other sicknesses in our community. And so right now, I have touched base with Matt, I don't know his last name, but he is the outreach director for the Maplewood Fire Department. And I'm going to see if I can tag on to the Ryan Hummer Memorial Run as one of the activities for this Move with the Mayor Challenge. So I will work with Mr. Reese to get more information out to our community about that. And that concludes my report. Ms. Graves, do you have a, this is item twenty-two, do you have a city attorney's report?
I do not, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number twenty-three, Mr. Reese, do you have a city manager's report?
I just want to say I'm happy to be here, and I obviously have future reports, so look forward to working with everyone.
Good to see you.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome. All right. Item number twenty-four, public forum. At this time, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your digital hand, so you can be called on.
I do show one person, so I'm gonna bring her in.
Hi, thank you very much.
Can you hear us?
I sure can. Thank you very much. This is Laney Shankelberg, seventy-three twenty-eight Marietta. I'm also a Parks Board member, and I just wanted to make a brief comment to add some additional information in response to some of the questions and the discussion earlier on about the Yale open space and some of the questions Mayor Canapper and Council Member Crossley and others may have had around the park board. I know a question came up around if the park board had been engaged in any conversations around the Yale open space, and I saw it was on the agenda for tonight. And so I did send a note to the Parks Board that I have heard that there could be ideas to convert that into a park. That may be an option. So I encourage the other members to just listen in on the meeting tonight. And as a result of that, we had a couple emails back and forth. I think there would be enthusiastic support of, you know, many improvements or, you know, increased amenities to that space, if it turns out it would fall within the scope of the Parks Board, scope of responsibilities. I, we are working on getting responses to an RFP for a master plan. However, I personally feel, and I think others on the board also share this, I don't want that master plan, which is a long-term project, to become a barrier to us taking action now. If they, I do, I strongly believe that we can take action now to address the needs of our community within parks while we're also working on a longer-term strategy for an equity-based master plan. You had also, I believe, Mayor Canapper, you had asked if Parks Board members are engaging with people who are using our parks. I think that's extremely important, and I know that's something that I do as well as other members of the Parks Board. And then even recently, we had a, a new member of the Parks Board, Becky brought up that we have a list of parks that each member will check on. She noticed the, the skate park was not on there, and so she volunteered to take the skate park. And I know she has been out there and speaking to people that are using the skate park to understand what it is that they would like to see and what their needs are and how that space is working for them. I think that is one of the best ways that we can uncover opportunities to improve our parks and understand how people are using them. I think Councilmember Crossley brought up a very good point around maintenance funding. I think that's really important as well, and we can keep that as a consideration in any discussions around, you know, potential ways we could help improve the Yale Park to look at things that are low maintenance that, or, or that have funding opportunities for that maintenance. I think I covered all of the questions that came up during that time, but I just wanted to pop in and add those.
Mayor Canapper, I'm seeing no more hands at this point.
All right, thank you. Do we need to go into closed session, Mr. Reese?
You're not.
All right, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Good night, y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you, Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah.